Okay, you're all set to begin.
Thank you, Sarah. Good evening and welcome to the October 24th, 2022 meeting of the Town of Barnstable Planning Board. My name is Steve Robichaud. The Planning Board's public hearing this evening will be held at 7:00 PM by remote participation methods. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. The meeting will be televised via Channel 18 and may be viewed via the Channel 18 website at streaming85.townofbarnstable.us/cablecastpublicsite. Real-time access to the Planning Board meeting is available utilizing the Zoom link or telephone number and make meeting ID provided below. Public comment can be addressed to the Planning Board by utilizing the Zoom link and telephone number and meeting ID provided below. The phone number, 888-475-4499, and tonight's meeting ID, 84501260025. Applicants, the representatives and individuals required or entitled to appear before the Planning Board may appear remotely and may participate through the link or telephone number provider. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations should be submitted in advance of the meeting so that they may be displayed for remote public access viewing. These materials may be accessed by contacting Karen Heron at karen.heron@town.barnstable MA.us or calling 508-862-4064. I'll now call the meeting to order and introduce our board members and staff, starting with Ray.
Hey, Sexton. Good evening.
And Tim?
Good evening, Tim O'Neill.
And Bob?
Uh, good evening, Bob Twist.
And Michael?
Good evening, Michael Messinas.
And Steve?
Good evening, Steve Costello.
And Mary?
Good evening, this is Mary Barry.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, and introducing our staff members, Jim?
Good evening, Jim Cooper, Senior Planner, Planning and Development.
And Kate?
Good evening, Kate Montanato, Assistant Director of Planning and Development.
And Karen?
Good evening, Karen Heron, Administrative Assistant, Planning and Development.
And Elizabeth?
Good evening, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development.
Thank you all so much. And notice of recording, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast on Channel 18 in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, and I'll now inquire whether anyone else is taking this meeting, and if so, please make your presence known. And at this time, we will welcome public comment. This is general public comment, not related to any of our items on this evening's agenda. And Sarah, are you aware of any members of the public here for general public comment?
I believe everyone that is here is for a specific item, but if I'm incorrect, speak now.
Excellent, thank you. And on to our first agenda item this evening. Steve, if you don't mind reading that item.
Sure. Regulatory agreements. Two String Properties LLC seeks to enter into a regulatory agreement with the Town of Barnstable to construct 34 condominium units and two buildings associated with improvements at 110 School Street and 115 School Street Hyannis. Redevelopment consists of 22 three-bedroom units and 12 two-bedroom units. A total of 70 parking spaces will be provided. Majority of members present and voting continue from August 8th, 2022 in order to form a subcommittee and continue from September 26th, 2022 and October 3rd, 2022.
Excellent, thank you, Steve. First, I just wanted to state that we have an active, open public hearing, and we will seek public comment this evening. Also, just wanted to state that I'm going to give an, I'm going to start by giving an update on the subcommittee process. Again, this application became, came before this Planning Board, and we moved it to a subcommittee. And I'll now move to give an update on or a recap of how that process went. I'm going to share my screen and share a slideshow. Can everybody see the slideshow? Just my view here.
Yes, but it's not in presenter mode.
Yeah, I noticed that. I think I'm going to switch my screen that I'm sharing. First, I have to figure out how to do that. All right, just a moment. Well, you know what? We'll do it in this mode. It'll work. You can see it okay, right? Okay, so this is just a recap of the proceedings with the subcommittee. The subcommittee was made up of five members, two members from Planning Board, two members from Town Council, and a member from the Housing Committee. The Planning Board members were myself, Steve Robichaud, and Steve Costello. From Town Council, we had Jen Cullen, Precinct 13, and Paula Schnep, Precinct 12, and Hilda Haye from the Housing Committee. We had four meetings. The first meeting was October 3rd, second meeting was October 13th, third meeting October 18th, and meeting number four was actually this evening, immediately prior to this meeting. Meeting number one, we had a thorough presentation from the applicant, and we had committee comments and questions. Meeting number two, we heard from DPW, Conservation, Building, and Fire. Meeting number three, we had an update from the applicant and a review of our draft findings. And then this evening, we had a final review of our draft findings. Now, this board has only had those findings for about 15 minutes. So I'm going to recommend that this item is continued this evening so that both the public and this board has an opportunity to thoroughly review the findings. And we, of course, will take future public comment, not just at this meeting, but at our next meeting as well. Just wanted to review the findings without getting into reading every word of the findings. I wanted Jim and I to just do kind of an overview of the findings. The first was a recommendation to implement all recommendations made by DPW. The key items that came out of the DPW's review were improvements on the south side of South Street, widening the sidewalk from five feet to eight feet, improving the sidewalks and curb ramps in project area to meet ADA standards, and the implementation of rapid flashing Vans. This view here shows the applicant's plan. Again, this is the north side of the property showing South Street. And this view here shows the revised marked-up plans by DPW. Jim, could you speak to what triggered the recommendation for the widening of the sidewalks to eight feet?
Absolutely, yes, sir. So the widening of the sidewalks to eight feet talks stems from the open space plan in which we, the town, looking holistically, is seeking to make connections throughout the Hyannis area for multi-use paths, and this is one of those corridors granted and recognized by DPW that this would be a small section, but that nevertheless, it would be a key section to get started and with the hope that over time, the rest of the corridor could be built out in the same specifications to enhance the multimodal path, meaning pedestrians, bikes, for all users in that area.
Great, thank you, Jim. Appreciate that. The second finding was related to height. Height was definitely one of the biggest topics in this subcommittee. We heard from the initial public comment that height was definitely an important subject. Initially, the applicant proposed about a 72-foot overall height for this building, and they revised their application to propose a maximum building height of plus or minus 65 feet. We have some of the initial renderings. Again, this kind of shows the five and a half stories, and then the revised renderings. You can see the difference with the structure makeup of the roof, which brought the overall height down. This view here, again, the before and after, is looking from the harbor. This is the coastal bank here, looking back at the property. This view here is looking down School Street from South Street. This is the original application, and then the revision. So again, you can see the change to the makeup of the roof, before and the after. This here shows some comparisons to other buildings around town with the revised height of, again, 64 feet nine inches, approximately 65 feet. Barnstable Town Hall is about 72 feet. Cell Tower next door to Barnstable Town Hall is 110. Cape Cod Hospital at its highest point, 106. So just a comparison again of where the current proposed height of the dockside condominiums stacks up against some other buildings around town. Finding number three was related to landscaping. The committee recommended more robust landscaping along South Street frontage, of course, is this area here. One note is with that widening of the sidewalk from five to eight feet, some of this landscaping will be needed for that. But even, even with that, we still see an opportunity to improve the landscaping and make it more robust to bring in as much green spaces as possible. Finding number four was related to affordable housing. This was by far the biggest topic for the subcommittee. The committee notes that payment in lieu of providing affordable onsite housing units is a mechanism that's used by many communities. The committee recognizes the request for a waiver to allow for off-site rental units. The committee recommends the applicant provides full details, floor plans, square footage, amenities of all proposed off-site affordable units. The committee recommends a greater number of inclusionary units than the minimum provided, given the likely discrepancy between luxury waterfront units and the off-site units proposed. The committee is recommending a minimum of nine bedrooms through no less than five total off-site affordable units. Finding number five is related to School Street access. The committee recommends that dockside condominium provides an onsite employee to ensure that dockside condominium-related activities, such as deliveries, disposal, parking, et cetera, does not impede vehicular access along a public way, School Street. And the committee recognizes that School Street is a public way utilized by emergency vehicles who operate out of dockside marina. This was another key point of discussion as the committee had concerns about access being impeded along South Street. This is an overhead view on one of the renderings showing a southern view towards Hyannis Harbor, which shows the corridor between the two buildings. This is an overhead view of current conditions. And again, this is that view of Dan O'Toole's plans, which show the corridor. There is some street parking, there are some dedicated turnoffs, and then towards the southern part of the property, there are three parking spaces. And finally, finding number six, the committee recognizes that this location is not appropriate for short-term rentals, and the committee recommends that rentals are limited to one rental per owner per year with a duration of no less than 30 days. Jim, was there anything you wanted to add with this quick recap?
No, I think you did a great job of recapping ultimate findings over the, over the course of the month and a half or so. And as you've mentioned before, the, the Planning Board is in receipt of the full findings, recognizing that, you know, they have just come across your email.
Great, thank you, Jim. And, you know, I know it's been a while since this board has had a chance to comment on this, and we've come a long way since our initial meeting, so I'd like to go right to board comment and hear from all the members of the board. After that, we will go to public comment, give the, the public a chance to speak to this. And without further ado, we'll go to the board. I'm going to start with, with Ray. Ray, do you have questions, comments, concerns based on, again, I know we just got the findings, but let's all kind of give an initial reaction and knowing that we'll have some time to digest this further and speak about it next time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, it is a quick and dirty, and I appreciate the overview. One thing that I'm taken with is I, I have, I think, two concerns just off the top of my head. First of all, frankly, I'm not so interested in counting bedrooms as I am counting front doors. So what I, what I would like to see and what I'm concerned about is providing as many affordable housing units as we can. The number of bedrooms certainly is important, but more important is the number of units. And having said that, I, I believe that for such a significant statement on the waterfront, that there is a, a public good that should come with this, and I have been paying close attention to our staff. And I would say that, I would say at the minimum, what I would like to see is six front doors, four two-bedroom units and two one-bedroom units in an off-site facility that would certainly not duplicate the, the facilities and the trim, if you will, of the condominium, of the condos, but certainly built to substantial standards. I think, I think that's an important thing to keep in mind as we go forward in this conversation. The other point, and it's, I'd ask Mr. Bornstein and his team to educate me a little bit. And that is, why does it, why does it have to be as high as it is? If I understand correctly, right now, even with the reduced reduction of a half a story, I, I believe that this edifice is twice as high as the standards allow. So I'm, I'm sure that there are good reasons, but I, I am not as expert in development as, as Mr. Bornstein's team. So I, I would ask if perhaps you could give me a quick and dirty on why it has, you have to have that height and that many units, which I understand would be a function of the height.
Yeah, Mr. Kenny and Mr. Bornstein, please feel free to respond.
I'll take it. John might want to add something to it. The, the big thing is the infrastructure cost. We're spending probably close to a million dollars, if not more, and probably more on sidewalks, sewer road, and missile lights and a few other things. But the big thing is the underground garage, the eight elevators, that cost stays there no matter what we do. And it's in excess of $8 million alone, just the infrastructure to hold the building. And we need that many units to pay for it. If we slice off one floor, which I'm going to just address, that takes 17% of the building away. And it's a marginal project. You, you might think, and I use the word marginal. I'm in Hyannis. I have a glass ceiling. What I can get for units, just the nature where we are, and we're not belittling it. If we're in another part of the Cape where the real estate values and waterfront are two and three times and four times as much, we could probably look at it differently. But we have to have those number of units to make this project pay for itself. And in fact, almost all condominium projects today are five stories. Right now, the town is in the middle of zoning everything four stories, and nobody has underground parking. Nobody's giving the town a million dollars for fixing up what they're requesting. And we're giving affordable housing, yeah, when we build it, if it was market rate, we're still not making the payments on it. So we're subsidizing that at a cost of a, a minimum of eight to 10,000 a unit for the life of the unit. So there's a lot of expenses that go on it. That's why we need the height. If we had to make them for any less, it wouldn't pay to do it. We just couldn't, couldn't afford to make it work. It's, it's just the cost of what it costs to do construction, and the fixed cost is there. What, no matter how many floors I have, I still got that cost. It doesn't go away. And I give you, for instance, let me just, one more thing. We have eight elevators in the building. I just got an increase three weeks ago of $240,000 for eight elevators. Brings the cost up of probably two and a half million dollars. That's count, count the shafts and the electrical. If we, if we eliminate one floor, we'd save maybe $2,200 a floor. We'd save 20 grand on a cost of 22,500,000 in the elevator. The cost is there. And that's why we have to, to make it work, we need that number of units.
And ju- just add a, a couple of comments. As Mr. Bornstein said, the underground parking is expensive to build. The elevator is expensive to build, but also the structure itself, the, the details. This is a high-end units, luxury units, and the details on the, on this design, as you've seen, is beautiful. It's not a stripped-down, run-of-the-mill apartment complex or condominium complex. It's a beautifully designed with many, many details, and it's a very expensive building to build. So between putting the infrastructure, the parking underground, the elevators to service everything, and then the detail in, in the development, it's a very expensive project to develop and build, and that's, that's why we have the number of floors and number of units. I appreciate that, gentlemen. That helps me kind of get the inside look at the, the numbers. I just, I, I'm, I'm wondering, it's, it's, it's on a, this is just, again, first impression. It's on a, it's on a prominence, a dominating prominence. Certainly, this is going to be Mr. Bornstein's signature project. It's when you come in, this is what you're going to see. One thing that I'm, I'm concerned about is that we want to be Cape Cod. We want to be Hyannis Harbor. We don't want to be Miami Beach. And that doesn't mean that this is Miami Beach. It's a lovely rendering of, of this. But hence, my, I wanted to be really clear on why the extra floor is necessary. So I appreciate the, the dollars and cents education on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, well-stated, Ray, and I appreciate those comments. I'm going to go to Tim next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know that this is the, just kind of the first impressions, and we just got the findings from the subcommittee about, probably about 25 minutes ago at this point. So I will be brief, but I do appreciate I was able to watch just all of the subcommittee hearings, and I think it was a great kind of first pass with Town Counselors Jennifer Cullen and Paula Schnep. And I think it was also great to have the Housing Committee member, Hilda, on there as well. And that kind of leads to my next point, that I share the sentiment with Ray that I think any type of off-site housing, I know there was a lot of talk in the committee of bedrooms versus unit totals. And I do know that there was some discussion over the desire to have different units available, you know, maybe the town wanting three-bedroom units, thinking that that might be a better fit for housing some of the families in need. I think that what I quickly saw in the draft findings of doing five total units, nine bedrooms, so thinking it's four two-bedrooms, right, and two one-bedrooms, units. I think that is great and a good start, and we should continue those conversations. I'm very interested to hear the public comment. I did see that there were some people that attended the subcommittee meetings, and I saw that we had some comment letters in, and we have some people here to speak tonight, so I'm interested to hear from everyone. My only other first impression is I still have some concerns over the, the traffic and the road layout and how everything is going to work on School Street there, specifically with some of the on-street parking and how people accessing down near the waterfront, as well as emergency services to get down to the dock, how they're going to be able to clearly pass that. It is tight. I know that it was discussed in the subcommittee, but it's still just kind of an area of concern, so I, I will be wanting to do a deep dive in that. But that's, that's it. That's my first impression, and I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing the public comment.
Great, Tim. Thank you so much for that. And Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I made quite a few comments, I think, at an earlier hearing, so I'm not going to repeat all of those. I did also had a chance to review the minutes of each of the subcommittee meetings, so I, I did have a chance to review the debates that were going back and forth on many of these issues. I do want to commend the, the applicant and the committee for working and making a number of changes that I think seem to have moved the building in the direction that we were looking to, to go. I have two primary issues based upon your summary of the, this evening. First, I want to, I want to commend Ray for his, his approach of counting front doors rather than bedrooms. I think that's really the key issue here. And it's also kind of a, you know, a catchy way to identify and focus on the issue. The, the problem I see with the committee's recommendation of a certain number of bedrooms not to be less than five units is that only gets five families off the street, and we want to get more than five families off the street, frankly. So I think as a minimum, as Ray suggested, a minimum of six units should be part of the agreement. Even with the corrections that have been proposed so far, based upon the subcommittee's meetings, there's still a huge number of waivers that we would have to grant in order to approve the, the project. So in light of the large number of waivers that are going to have to be granted, I do think it's appropriate for the town to, to balance that off by getting a higher number of affordable units than we would get if this was a as-of-right type of development. We're really talking apples and oranges between a, a development agreement and, and as-of-right kind of approach. So the number of affordable units really shouldn't necessarily vary any relationship to what the number would be if the applicant didn't require any waivers. So I think six, as Ray outlined, four with two bedrooms and two with one bedroom is a great start. You know, maybe even more than six might be appropriate at the end of the day. But I think a minimum of six would be where we should be starting on this particular issue. Again, we're looking at getting families off the street, not filling up bedrooms, so I think that's the key issue here. The other, the other issue that I still have some concern on is one which a number of people have commented, both on the board and the public comments, and that's the height of the building. The requested waiver is a huge deviation from the bulk requirements in the zoning for this particular area. And it's come down seven feet, which I think is not an insignificant adjustment. I think it is a, a significant adjustment. It changes the lines of the building, and that changes the visual impact. It changes the lines of the building and that changes the visual impact of the building. Um, and I've seen the artist renderings taken from a view out in the harbor from various distances as to how it would approach. A number of the public comments have suggested, well, that may not be accurate because it may be as much as a far as a mile away uh, the viewpoint for the scale. I don't have any idea how far away the viewpoint is on the artist's renderings. What I do know is it's very difficult to get a real feeling for 65 feet or 72 feet of elevation in the abstract. So, Mr. Chair, I'm wondering, would it be possible to do something like a balloon test or a crane test to be able to see exactly what the height of the building would be? Uh, you know, for um, the committee and members of the public who want to participate could actually see where the building would top off at 65 feet. Those are really the only two issues I want to raise uh, tonight. Um, of course, naturally, as we go forward, we may have other adjustments to address, but those are the two that were most important to me. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you, Bob. Great comments. And uh, Jim, if you don't mind just making a note to look at the feasibility of um, possibly kind of a a visual aid to the height and uh, work with the applicant to see if that's something that's possible. I think it's a great idea. Um, continuing along, uh, Michael.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to be repetitive as I heard, you know, the concerns of my board members per se, and I strongly agree with what they have, you know, what they had said so far. I mean, let's face it, this is a beautiful project. But also, we are facing a housing crisis right now. And especially in Hyannis, there's thousands of families right now that is going through um, not having a place to live. So um, with that being said, one of my biggest concerns is the uh, number of units. Um, the affordable, you know, affordable uh, units um, on that development. Um, yes, I had a chance to look and review all the documentation that was sent to us. But I would love to hear um, the public. I would love to hear what they have to say about this. I don't wanna be repetitive, and I would love to hear the public. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Michael. Well said. And uh, Mary.
Thanks, Steve. Um, I missed the first meeting on this, um, but I appreciate the subcommittee's time um, and the presentation that you have provided today. I thought that was really um, helpful. I did watch um, the previous meeting. Uh, my my concerns, as Michael well stated, there's a lot of um, a lot of good points being made already by Tim and Bob and Ray with regards to the waivers, uh, the affordable housing and obviously the parking. Um, a few of us were on this board several years ago when this came up uh, for a development project. And we had a very similar comments on on the project at that time. Um, I appreciate the the efforts that Mr. Bornstein has put together with regards to the comments that were put together by the public so far. But I still feel that there's a lot that we could do to make this a little bit more of a, uh, an appeasement um, both for the neighborhood, for the town, and for the village of Hyannis. Um, I understand the development is is a place that could benefit from changes from what's there right now. Um, I just, I'm not sure that this is the exact um, answer without, especially with the number of waivers. And I'll pass it off to uh, back to you, Steve, for for um, the rest of the committee. But I am interested to hear what the public has to say. Um, and then I just had one question, and I think this is probably more for Jim just before I close, is is that any of the agreements, just so if this ever went forward, whatever happens with the regulatory agreements, and this is going to be a condo, I'm assuming, right? Condo, these units are gonna be condoized, and there'll be a board. And that the board will have to um, appea- will have to um, when it transitions to the board, they will have to continue with any agreements that are that are established in the regulatory agreement for the life of the project? Is that correct?
That is correct. It runs with the land.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, good question. Great. No, thank you, Mary. And uh, Steve?
Thank you, Stephen. I um, just a couple of things. I understand kind of the point of view on the on the bedrooms, and I appreciate that versus kind of the front doors. I guess that as we kind of worked through the discussion, there was, you know, an imbalance of three-bedroom units that are being proposed versus uh, two-bedrooms or one-bedrooms. So what the way that we were kind of thinking about it, when you say units, it would, in our opinion, was it wasn't really descriptive enough to understand could that be a studio? Do you want to call that a unit? Could be a one-bedroom? Are we gonna kind of trade uh, that type of square footage and and housing for essentially, you know, luxury condominiums? So I think when we kind of started to think about it, just in terms of how to how to how to create something that seemed to be a little more apples-to-apples, recognizing, you know, the stretch from a luxury-built condo versus a you know, what is, you know, hopefully essentially a a modern, new, affordable housing unit. That's that's kind of where we came up with the bedrooms. But in terms of what the number of of units are, I don't disagree that, you know, uh, pushing the envelope is not a bad idea, simply because for all the reasons that everyone has already stated. Uh, and then I'm I'm more interested in hearing the public comments as well, and I I think one of the points made, um, hey, I agree with Bob in terms of trying to trying to understand the visual height, it is is very difficult. And then a suggestion was made, and I think maybe we can incorporate uh, potentially a field trip to the site, because that that does, even even after the conversations we've had, just in terms of practical logistics of the site itself, and I think this is something that uh, most site plan review, um, you know, may have been something that should have been brought up a little bit more in detail. But the reality is, as as has been pointed out, UPS, FedEx, US Postal Service, they're at my door on a regular basis. Fortunately, I'm on a uh, kind of a quiet cul-de-sac, so it's it's not as busy. Uh, but but clearly, when you look down High School Road, you see sort of the potential for one or two trucks, UPS, FedEx, Amazon itself. Um, should there be a couple of trucks stacking up? I I think we may want to just think about from a logistical standpoint, how to practically have a pull-off that allows a vehicle such as those to be completely off the road. Uh, I can imagine on a busy summer day, someone trying to back up uh, onto South Street and that creating, you know, significant uh, uh, traffic issue as well as, you know, a danger to the to the public. So I'll leave it at that for now and and hopefully move on to uh, some public comment that we can all learn from.
Excellent. Thank you, Steve. And uh, Jim, um, I I think we should look into a uh, site visit similar to what we did for Wakeby Road. Um, see if we can come up with with that. Um, Stu, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I I'd like to. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead. Yes.
Yeah, we submitted a picture of a four-story house or apartment. And this is proposed, what's being proposed around Hyannis now, four stories. What's being built in the industrial park, 200-plus units. Uh, this is no higher than a regular four-story building that is being built, and you're proposing the zoning on it. So we kept the height, it's pretty reasonable, and considering we have a garage underneath it uh, to park all the cars, it's really a a great feat to keep it at the same height. I think it's, let me qualify it. I think it's a foot and a half taller than a normal four-story building that you are in the middle of zoning and what's around town in four stories. There aren't a lot of them, but they are there. So our height isn't any higher than what what is uh, around in four-story buildings. And we did submit a plan to Jim. I believe you have it from the architect of stuff that he is in the middle of building. And if you can bring that up just to show the board, it has the measurements on it and everything, and it's it's a typical four-story. What makes our building look a little different? We're spending $2 million and better to dress it up so it doesn't look like a box. I mean, this is a signature project for Hyannis and for the harbor. We didn't want just an ordinary box. We wanted something special, and I went through 86 different architects to get something special, and and we worked hard on it, a lot of hours, a lot of time, a lot of months. And you've got the pictures of what they are. And I'm just addressing it so you'll you'll feel comfortable with the height.
No, appreciate that, Stu. No, definitely uh, good comments. I mean, of course, with all that being said, it is still a considerable increase over the current zoning, but um, I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate um, those comments. Jim, before we get too far uh, away from the the site visit conversation, uh, am I right in stating that a potential site visit would simply be an opportunity for um, planning board members to tour the site, ask questions of staff, uh, potentially ask questions of, say, Mr. Ojala. Um, and and that's it. It's not a meeting. It's not a discussion. Um, it's not something that other people should be attending. Is that correct?
Well, so at the at the site walk, uh, there is no deliberation. It would be, um, you know, we would probably just uh, cover all our bases, uh, send out limited invites of two or three uh, at a time to come down to the site uh, and just review the site, walk around, no real questions to the applicant. Uh, that would be saved for back here at a public meet, at a the public hearing. I can certainly work with the applicant to potentially put together a height demonstration of a balloon or crane or something to that effect uh, prior to the board going out there.
Great. I appreciate that. I know last time we had a site walk, there were some concerns about people not being able to attend, and I just wanted to be clear that it's not um, it's not a meeting. It's not a discussion. Um, so I just wanted to make that clear. Um, any additional board comments before we turn to public comment? Okay, great. So we're gonna go to uh, public comment and um, you know, five, five minutes or so. Um, definitely, you know, take your time and and uh, say everything you wish to say. And um, Sarah, would you like to um, identify members of the public?
Sure. Uh, first up for public comment is Cheryl Powell. Cheryl, you can unmute. Go ahead.
I have. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, perfect.
Okay. First of all, I want to apologize for only attending one of the uh, subcommittee meetings. But when they're at 8:30 in the morning and I have patients scheduled three months in advance, they would not understand if I said, I'm sorry, I have a personal matter, I have to reschedule you. So I apologize for not making them, but I have checked into everything afterwards. Second of all, I wanted to ask, I did send some communications. Uh, have those been distributed to the planning board members, the in the subcommittee? They're sent, I sent an extra set today, one from Commissioner Despedopulos and another from mine that I sent for the October 3rd meeting.
Yes, and uh, Jim, could you uh, just confirm that uh, is is a yes?
Yeah, yes. And there'll be uh, all the public comment will be collected and and distributed out to the planning board moving forward as well.
So all the committee members have received those?
That is my understanding. Apparently, they go out to the full board.
Yep, they went on to laser fish, so they could link right up to them.
Okay, thank you very much, because that covers some of it. Um, so I'm not going to reiterate from things that I said in there. Uh, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Bornstein. It seems that he's he's made some changes. I don't want to comment too much on the changes because I don't know that it might come back to us, so I'm really going on what was there before. Um, it, Mugar is brought up almost each time, but one, I want to point out that Mugar is sent set back considerably, and it's not in the historic district. Um, the uh, we talk about the cost of putting it together, and I want to thank Mr. Bornstein for a number of things he does do for the community. It's wonderful. But also, we have a task to do. Uh, so we're talking about five-story building and the cost. Well, if we did a 30-story building and multiplied that, it's still gonna be cost. But we need to look into perspective. Is this appropriate for the area the way that it is now? Uh, as for the lighthouse that was in the picture, I actually went out in a boat. I do have a skipper's license, and I checked it out. So I went, went looked where the lighthouse was a little bit before it. I have a friend that the Sawyers who have uh, a moor in there. And that looked about the right spot. I put a quarter in front of me. I wish I could have as much silver as it would take to cover that entire area as it did by putting it there. Uh, Mr. Twist, I want to compliment you because you have a knack for getting to the point, which I love. Uh, it it common sense, and we're talking about a number of things. And in the last meeting I attended, you pointed out that we want to be careful in the harbor harbor area because whatever we do triggers the future. So you're absolutely right, and you brought up a number of things tonight that I thought were very uh, pertinent. Uh, I have said in my letter that with regard to what winched before the HHDC that 2.5 stories is what's acceptable, what's what's there. But we have guidelines, guidelines and ordinances. We all take a notice to abide by them. There's no point in having them if we don't abide by them. Um, so, and I'm glad to see it's it's come down a bit, and I do totally understand the financial parts about it. We've taken care of that. Um, I noticed that it's been it's been uh, pointed out that there are now revised renderings. And I question if that does not mean that it needs to come back to the HHDC because what's going forward now is not what was proposed and not what was agreed upon. I point out that we, in order to pass us, and we had a limited number of um, uh, commissioners at the time, we needed a vote of four. It did get a vote of four. But then almost immediately afterward, one of the communications was sent to you was from a new commissioner who voted who was sent to me, and I will read it out even though it's been sent to you, since it has come to my, uh, good morning, Cheryl. Since it has come to my attention that some of the abutters to 110th School Street and 53 School Street, I think it's 115 uh, in Hyannis, Mass, might not have been properly notified about this project. I feel that they have the right to be heard, and if they uh, if they so choose, can this be done? I have talked with him about it. He feels very strongly that they should be should be included. Um, I don't think it's, I I, we have fantastic staff. They do an outstanding job. But I don't think we send them notarized or or certified or anything like that. So sometimes if they don't come back, it's not noted. That's my understanding of it, that they didn't get it. But that doesn't mean that they have any less right to have a say. Um, anyway, so my suggestion is in order to clean it up, um, and I I also note that in one of the previous meetings going back, that one of the former commissioners uh, from the HHDC did point out how great it was in that. But that was someone who had some comments, well, whatever. Um, I I feel that since that this is a revised rendering, has been acknowledged, it's a different proposal. I suggest that perhaps it should go back to the HHDC um, to uh, see if the current proposal, which is why I don't want to comment on the current proposal, although I think there's been a number of great suggestions made, is with all the changes, is something that it would have a unanimous um, approval of or not. Uh, but to come back for reconsideration for what is now a different proposal entirely, well, not entirely, but mostly. Uh, I am happy to answer any questions. I think I've covered most of what I I wanted to say. Although I want to point out that the things that have been brought up about the revisions, I think there's a lot of really nice things that have been said, but if it does come back to us, I don't want to have commented on on those or made my feelings about them known, because I need to be squeaky-clean if it does come back to us. That's my suggestion. I want to thank you for hearing me. Please make sure, though, that those two emails, including mine, uh, which I sent for the October 3rd meeting, has been distributed to the uh, people of the planning board. And thank you very much for hearing me out.
Understood. Thank you very much, Cheryl. Great comments. And um, Sarah, uh, next up?
Uh, next up, we have Laura Cronin. Laura, you can unmute.
This will be good.
Can you hear me?
We got you. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, um, Chairman Robichaud and the Planning Board Committee and members of staff. Um, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. I I did also send a letter to you. Um, I believe that it was distributed to the board um, with regard to this property and the regulatory agreement for the Dockside Condominiums. And I am writing to oppose the site and the project as it is right now. Um, it, to me, it looked Um, it, to me, it looks like the revisions haven't, um, changed the original concerns that were had from the beginning, and I have stated prior that the project is just, I mean, the the layouts and the design is just wonderful, but it's just too big and too dense, in my opinion, for that location. Um, the the height is still over, the two-and-a-half stories allowed in that area, even the revisions that we're talking about um, are not in residential or waterfront areas. They are in and proposed into, like, I think in those areas that you're talking about, on Main Street or in other industrial parks where you can have that height in those areas, and it does not, uh, it would it would fit more appropriately. Um, I think someone had also mentioned that the comparisons between the hospital, um, that is outside the historic district, but it's also outside of regular, uh, zoning of, uh, requirements, as well as town hall. Town hall has already been there, and I don't believe that any of the municipal buildings have to really comply with it, depending on where it is right now. So the fact that there is already a building in that for that site in that area does not justify, um, why we should break the zoning and the two-and-a-half stories that are in that area right now. Um, and then looking from the waterfront, it would definitely be a lot higher, as the other renderings had shown that it is more like a six or seven-foot view from the waterfront, and you're, we're setting a precedent with all of these waivers for this, um, valuable, valuable, um, historic area. I mean, Hyannis has a wonderful harbor, and yes, it could use some improvements, there's no doubt, but, um, do we want to provide all these waivers for that particular project when, in fact, we don't know what the consequences could be? We could be setting precedences for that in in other areas as well, on the waterfront or in residential, if we allow this to go in there now. Um, and with with regard to the regulatory agreement, um, there's been some discussion on whether or not, I I heard, did hear and confirmed that the agreement goes with the sale of the property, which is good to know, but what happens if they aren't able to comply with what is being proposed with regard to materials or, um, pricing, things like that? Uh, the there there is a concern that, um, these type of projects, after a while, nobody sits there and makes sure that you've got all of those eyes dotted and t's crossed from what they said they were gonna be doing. Uh, I just think that it's a beautiful historic place of putting a a large oversized building, and the the renderings, the new renderings have got actually different. I just saw them um, today, so I haven't had a chance to really look at those, but when you did it through your presentation, it really showed a dramatic, um, aesthetic difference, um, from what was in there before. And, you know, one of the things I did comment on was someone during this process had said, you know, what would it look like fifteen, twenty years from now? You never know by giving all those waivers, but the property there has been in that ownership for, uh, this developer for quite a number of years, I think since nineteen ninety-six, and 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 has chosen to keep it that way. So being able to reward them for for something that they are, you know, trying to promote, that they're better beautifying the area or making it better, and right now it's an empty lot, or it's a falling-down restaurant. Well, those things happen because they're the owner. They did not develop it. He chose to to leave them the way they were, and I don't know that we should continue to reward people for not taking care of their properties, whether it be this developer or others. We 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 have a lot of them around town that there's not, uh, a lot of maintenance being kept up, and I would just be really concerned with doing it in this area. If it was within the, I I think someone just said, if it was within the, um, the stories or in the, um, the zoning and requirements and wouldn't require all these waivers, you'd be having a different situation. Um, with regard to the affordable housing units, um, I I think that, you know, I would, I would go with whatever the board does, look for getting compensation with that. Um, I I I don't think, I don't think we're gonna be able to solve the entire problem with this project, but we certainly should be able to get some that, some of the, uh, some of those units into, um, an area that is, um, you know, that's that is conducive to what is needed for the for the for the units, but overall, I think, to me, that that wasn't the biggest issue, because I think that the project itself is just too large, too too bulky for waterfront and a residential area, and it would definitely be something that could be in a different place. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Laura. Really appreciate those comments. And Sarah, next up?
Next up is Benjamin Sero. Benjamin, uh, if you could unmute.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, Ben Sero, eighty-nine Lewis Bay Road, uh, adjoining the property across the street from, uh, Mr. Bornstein's, um, uh, property. Uh, my concern is really is just the parking issue. Um, we have a limited amount of parking at the condo right now, and uh, taking a look at the number of parking spaces allotted by Mr. Bornstein is, where do all the visitors park? Like, are they going to? How do they park? Where do they park? Um, evidently, they're gonna try and park in our parking lot, which is somewhat full during the summer months, especially, um, because we have, um, commercial, um, residents there, a doctor, a dentist, and some, um, Cape Cod, um, hospital, um, offices there. What happens to those people? Where do they park? How are they gonna park?
Thank you for that. Um, yeah, no, I can, I can hear you. Any, uh, any additional comments?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay. No, I appreciate that, and that's certainly something that, uh, we'll be sure to bring up, um, in the coming conversations. It's, um, was a concern of the subcommittee and, uh, remains a remains a question, so we'll definitely be sure to discuss that further. Um, Sarah, next up?
Uh, next we have Marie Le Blank. Marie, if you could unmute?
Thank you. Um, I'm also representing eighty-nine Lewis Bay. I'm chairman of the board of the Lewis Bay Condo Associations. Um, Mr. Bornstein actually approached us to rent spots for his overflow parking, and that was something that we considered, and, uh, we did not accept his offer. And so obviously, there are still concerns within that situation. Um, we do tow on a regular basis. It's very annoying. The, I can tell you from a personal basis, my place overlooks South Street, that folks do love to use that as a racing zone, and folks are often, um, zooming down that street to get to the end, to dead end at the hospital, and also turning in the wrong direction. So as it is, the markings on the street there are not very well done, and folks turn down that street the wrong way all the time. So adding more congestion and more traffic there, I think, is, you know, something that would really, really be a problem. And also, the setting of the precedence. Um, again, the folks over at the Anchor Inn sold after many, many years of it being a family business, and I personally know that the reason that they did not go up any higher was because of their parking situation. And I would hate to see what might happen now that a corporation has taken that over and is looking to now perhaps apply for waivers, depending on what happens with Mr. Bornstein's project.
Well said. Thank you, Marie. Appreciate that. Sarah, uh, next up?
Yep. Uh, next up, we have Craig Tamish. Craig, if you wanted to make some comments, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, thank you very much. Uh, just a few things. Uh, I had the opportunity this summer to observe, uh, the traffic on School Street, and to say I was amazed at how much traffic is actually there is is an understatement. Uh, the number of cars and trucks that currently come down there is, uh, is phenomenal, and they come down there primarily now because of the Steamship Authority, but there's no place for them to go. Uh, it's a dead end, as you all well know. There's no place to turn around. Uh, what is going to happen with the increased traffic? Uh, looking at the plans, I I noticed that the right-of-way is is thirty-three feet. Uh, at the intersection of School Street, it's narrowed down to twenty-two feet uh, with the sidewalks that are gonna be put in. Uh, I just don't know if this is adequate for the trucks and the amount of traffic that are going to be coming in and out of that roadway. Uh, the fact that they're requesting onsite parking, I find is phenomenal. Currently, there is no, excuse me, on-street parking. There is no on-street parking allowed now for good reason, because the road is narrow and there is a considerable amount of traffic. To allow on-street parking and to, uh, decrease the lanes that are available for people coming and going does not seem to make much sense to me. Uh, the applicant has stated that they will hire a parking manager. Uh, is this someone that'll be available forty hours a week, eight to four, seven days a week during the summer? I think that has to be, uh, investigated and defined. Someone also mentioned that, uh, at the point that the condo is turned over to a condo board, uh, what is going to require them to continue to employ a parking manager? If they say we can't afford it, or they just don't do it, what are the enforcement or what are the repercussions for them as far as, uh, their failure to do so? One of the issues I think that that's going to occur on daily basis are things that someone mentioned, the UPS trucks, the FedEx trucks, the trash trucks. What about landscapers? Where will the landscapers that come in to work on the building? The pool maintenance people, where will these people be parking, uh, while they're doing their work? Uh, I already think, we already see that there are a limited number of parking spaces under the building. Will the underground parking be high enough to accommodate the trucks and the equipment that's gonna have to be brought in and out to do their job, uh, properly? And lastly, one of the things that the applicant mentioned was that in order to make this project financially viable, they have to go to four or or four-and-a-half stories. Well, may, to me, that's kind of a circular logic. If the town says that, uh, normally this would be a two-and-a-half-story area, but they're requesting four stories or four-and-a-half stories to make it financially viable, maybe this project isn't the right place for it to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Appreciate those comments, and, uh, I know the 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 traffic was absolutely a big topic of conversation and will continue to be, so thank you for that and your other comments. Um, Sarah, next up?
Um, I don't know if Attorney Lawler wanted to speak, but now since
Sure, I absolutely do, yes. Um, well, thank you, David Lawler. Um, I've been the, uh, at the prior meeting, and I, uh, attended the subcommittee meeting, and and I know you folks are all volunteers, and I certainly, as a citizen of the town of ours, will appreciate that. Um, and have given this a lot of thought. Um, you know, I represent the Marina um, in front, and before I get into this, three major issues, I want to address two quick, fairly quickly, and wanted a little bit more detail, that precedent, that's the height, and then parking traffic. But before that, I just want to address, I, um, respectfully to Mr. Bornstein, some of the comments that he made. I just I just want to point out that when he indicated this is as high as the four-story buildings in the area, his architect had presented a a four-story building with a hip roof and, you know, indicated that, uh, it was the, you know, similar height to this five-story. Uh, that's, well, and they also keep pointing out to the greenery and the hospital, those are two flat-roofed buildings. They don't have hip stiles in the area, so really, when they're pointing that out, it's not i- it's really not apples and oranges that are being pointed out. Yeah, there might, you can, you can go somewhere and find a four-story building with some fancy hip roof hiding all the, uh, utilities on top, but that's not what you have here. And 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 the issue, and that kind of brings it into precedent, where if you think about it, this entire meeting and all the other meetings, everybody keeps pointing to the greenery, they keep pointing to the hospital, they keep pointing to the town hall. I can guarantee you, if this is built, the next people before you will be pointing to this building, and that's what precedent is. So that is a very, very important thing to consider, as Ms. Levine talked about with respect to what's gonna happen to the hotel across her and the whole waterfront, for that matter. And, uh, the town is recently proposing new zoning. They're not proposing to change the height zoning in this area. And also, with respect to, respectfully to Mr. Bornstein, and also, um, uh, Mr. Tamish, I don't know if you recognize him. He, um, he comes with some authority. He is the former deputy chief of the municipal, uh, police department. I think he was the deputy chief for years, uh, and an officer before that, and then a patrolman for for decades. So when he gets up and speaks, I think you have to listen a little, a little, a little more closely. Now, with respect to, um, I lost my train of thought there. Um, okay, but Mr. Bornstein keeps talking about price. Um, he he purchased this lot sometime over twenty years ago. Um, and he has indicated, has kept it in the condition it's in now for that period of time, but more importantly, when he bought it, it was two halves. He sold off the front half, so when he keeps talking about money, that might, if I, if my memory is correct, he has a zero basis in his property, so when they're talking about money, keep that in mind. And also, talking about putting eight elevators in and underground parking, well, if you proposed a condominium that had an appropriate amount of units and two-and-a-half stories, you could park the cars in the parking lot, and you'd probably only need one elevator per building. And that's, so take that into consideration when you're, when you're thinking about why, you know, he needs all this extra relief. You know, he he doesn't. He needs it because he wants to go up five stories and and build, um, you know, thirty-some-odd, high-end condominiums with three bedrooms apiece. So now, um, the other, I dealt with, you know, precedent already. Now, with respect to height, um, this proposal initially, this proposal is to increase to, you know, essentially, one-story building, uh, to five. It's not reducing a five-and-a-half-story building to five. Had he proposed a ten-story building and cut it in half, would we be applauding him for that? No. So really, it's what's on the table of what's being proposed. And what's being proposed is going up five stories on the, on one of the highest points in the harbor, which, you're at least twenty-seven, twenty-two feet above sea level at this point, which then adds a couple of more stories to your visual impact, whether or not you cut the six or seven feet off with those peaks. So that's in perspective of the height, and I I applaud, um, Mr. Twist in recommending a crane. They're gonna need a crane to build this thing anyway if it goes up four stories, but if you can have a crane with a ball at the end of it, it goes up four stories, and you pull a boat, you'll get an understanding of the visual impact. And when you compare that to the greenery building, which is four stories and a flat roof, it's also set back a tremendous, it's across the road, and also, from a massing standpoint with the harbor, you have the Harbor Hotel in front of it. Um, I forget, I think they renamed it. I don't know what it's called right now. But, and with respect to the hospital, you have all the infrastructure of the boatyards and other buildings, and it's set way back as is the, um, the town, uh, administration building. This really is a a building that's within, I measured it out using my scale. I think I'm okay, but I think I've got ninety-eight feet from the water's edge at its closest point. That's how thirty, you know, you know, nine, a hundred feet, uh, one-third of a football field. It's tiny, as it's, it's distance to the water. So this sits twenty-two feet up on a high hill, um, you know, just menacing over the harbor, and that's what you're gonna be looking for, because if it's built, it's not coming down for a long, long time. Now, the area I really want to get into is, um, with respect to parking. We haven't heard a lot about it, and you heard the applicant, and he's very well represented, um, talk about the fact that they meet the parking requirements. But this is the important thing with regulatory agreements. Everything's on the table because of the relief they're seeking. The applicant is seeking thirty-two-on, some-on-waist from zoning. Well, also, think about it, that when the zoning was created for parking, it wasn't created in a vacuum. It was created believing that there was only gonna be two-and-a-half stories, believing the setbacks were in compliance. And all those other thirty-two things that the applicant is seeking relief for, most of them certainly affect parking or affect most of them certainly affect parking or affect the overall property. So, when they say that, you know, we don't need relief from parking, yeah, well, if you weren't seeking, if you were looking to build a two-and-a-half-story building and having parking out back and we're in the setbacks, you're right, you wouldn't. But they do because of the situation. And now, and the other thing, in attending the subcommittee meeting, the members, and I know it became a little bit of an issue here between front doors and bedrooms. Now, but a lot of the subcommittee members said, well, let's look at bedrooms. And bedrooms are really what you need to look at, not just for affordable housing, but bedrooms is what you need to look at for calculating the necessary parking. You've got ninety bedrooms and I think less, or just around seventy, sixty-something or seventy, parking spaces. Now, also keep in mind that six of those spaces are blocked in. So, those can only be dedicated to one particular unit. You're not going to be having your car there and having to worry if your neighbor's out to dinner with their other car trying to park. And again, with precedent about the parking. Now, there was some talk about comparing this to Captain's Row. Completely different project, much closer to town to walk to rentals. We're younger people who some may or may not own a car, but certainly one vehicle in that income bracket. These are million-dollar units being sold to people who are wealthy. And generally, those are people who are older. And older people aren't going to be walking into Hyannis. And older people can clearly afford two vehicles. So, you've got ninety bedrooms, you know, and you've got seven, call it seventy parking spaces. The math doesn't work. Not only, it just, and then of those, you have about ten of us so are on the street. And that's where I'm going to kind of work with the street issue. My understanding is, I know that the Hyannis Fire Chief was at one of the subcommittee meetings, but I also understand he actually went to the property today and did address additional concerns with the town after he had a chance to walk the property and view some of the issues. Because if you look at the plans submitted by Cape Cod Engineering, one, the sixth set of the plans, now, one of the things that I noticed is that on the plans, they start at the top of South Street and they end right before the bottom of South Street, but they don't actually encompass the bottom of the street. That bottom of the street is a bit of a disaster. My understanding is that on a regular basis, trucks pull down there thinking they're going down to the steamship. I've heard individuals tell me specifically that eighteen-wheelers pull down there. And they have to back up the entire length of the street. Now, and it gets a tremendous amount of foot traffic with people going to the steamship and then just people generally confused or wanting to see the water. Now, that's the way it exists today and it's a problem today. You take into consideration, you have people coming to these buildings, guests who don't, who can't pull in because it's going to be gated to enter the garage. Where do they go? They drive down. Certainly, these parking spaces on the street will be filled. Where do they go? They drive down, they drive onto my client's property and try to figure out where they go. Or they go down there to park to walk something up. You know, again, these are wealthy people. What happens on Thursdays and Fridays when you have the cleaning people come in for the forty-some-odd units? What happens? I mean, these are condominiums that are being sold for over a million-three or whatever they are. My guess is these people aren't cleaning their own toilets, okay? They're having people come in on Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays before the weekend. Where do they go? And that takes a couple of hours. It's a substantial impact to these people. So, when you're talking about wealthy people, you have to think about, well, what brings these, you know, what occurs? Now, I'll be the first to admit, to admit that in February and January and March, there's not going to be a problem here. But what happens between June fifteenth and September fifteenth? When they come down to these three bedrooms and they bring their kids with their grandkids, as they will be, and guests come to visit, I'm at that stage and point where I'm an empty nester and we have two cars in the driveway for nine months of the year. And on weekends in the summer, I'll have as much as six or seven, certainly four every weekend. So, that's what you're looking at. That's the impact that you're looking at with this particular project. You're looking at the impact that's going to happen to the neighbors at Lewis Bay. Where are they going to park? That was a regulatory agreement and the parking requirements were, you know, were set. Where do they go? Where, what happens now when you have an eighteen-wheeler backing up and the fire department has to get down to the fire boats because there's a fire or even worse, someone's had a heart attack in the harbor? They've got to get there quickly. What happens when that's going on and all of a sudden the Amazon truck pulls in behind them? This is an extremely narrow road. This is an extremely dangerous position with respect to the access points here. Now, the, you know, these are, these are the matters here that, you know, that really, you know, matter. I know you have a, you know, an aesthetically beautiful building. I'm not going to deny that, everybody has different taste. I think it's attractive, but does that give you the right to put that much density in this particular area? Effect the height that much in this beautiful harbor? I mean, Hyannis is the gateway to Cape Cod. Everybody coming from Nantucket comes in through Hyannis. A lot of people go into the vineyard, the airport. This is, this is the harbor. And, you know, we need to preserve that. And there's a reason the zoning requirements are what they are. And there's a reason why the applicant is seeking thirty-two specific areas of relief. It's just, it's just too much for the lots. They're tiny, they're small. You know, had these, had these lots been combined and they tried to put one building up and, you know, the street wasn't there, maybe? You could have some parking on the street, you could have some underground parking. But it's just, it's just such a grab. It's just way too much for this particular area. And if you approve it and you're wrong, it's going to be a problem for long after. I'm dead and gone. And that's the issue. You know, what precedent? When the neighbors come in and say, hey, not just the greenery, look, you know, look at the dockside project. That's the issue. This is, you know, and again, it's a hard decision for you folks. I understand that. You're looking at affordable housing and your volunteers. But if you think about the overall impacts of what can occur if this goes up at five stories and that much density with, you know, only people who can pull in are the owners. They get some type of guest pass, where do they go? Where do you park? Where do you park on the Fourth of July weekend? Where do you park on August eighth and sixteenth, if that's a Saturday and Sunday? You know, it's just going to be, and then, you know, it's in condos, I'm not criticizing the condominium developer, but when you get a condo and you sell the last one, you're out. You know, that's what happens here. And then you're dealing with thirty-four owners trying to figure out what's going on. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Attorney Lawler. I appreciate those comments. And Sarah, do we have anybody else?
I believe that is it, but if I missed anyone, oh, it looks like Mr. Kirker wants to speak.
Kirker wants to talk.
Wayne, go ahead.
Hi there. I've got a little bit of laryngitis somehow, so I'll give it my best. You know, the beauty of the harbor is way more important to the millions of people that come through Hyannis and see it and to those of us that live here than it is to one guy that just wants to do much more than the people, than the size of this property can do comfortably. And yet, it feels like we're looking at this like it's another minor run-of-the-mill project. Well, it's not. This is going to be the first thing everybody sees come to Hyannis from the water. And a lot of them come from beautiful Nantucket, beautiful Montez Vineyard, or a lot of other beautiful places. And they're going to see the tallest building on the harbor, on the tallest piece of property. What if we all want to do that? And Hyannis Marina, would you let me, if he, would you let me sit some twenty feet lower, build a six or seven-story thing? Well, this is a great precedent in case I ever want to do that. But it's not what I want to do. You've got to remember, he bought this property knowing that it was all for two and a half stories. And now he just wants to pretend it's double the size and go double the height. Now, personally, I agree that the harbor is probably limited at two and a half stories and should be higher. But personally, I don't think it ought to be more than twice as high. And this is more than twice as high because it seems to be there's a half a story sticking out of the ground with the basement. And as high, and as big as that basement is coming out of the ground, it's got no place to put the cars that are really going to go there. The greenery or the Lewis Bay condos across the way are always playing. This year, I see them towing, they have to tow their cars out of it, parked illegally from the steamship. I haven't had to do much towing down to the dockside because I've got people manning it. And they man it for the parking, eighty percent, twenty percent of the time they're manning it for the actual mariner activity because there's only thirty slips down there that just doesn't need any management. When Stuart had the dockside, he didn't have any management there. And that's okay, but we're down there just to protect our customers from the, from the people from the steamship, you know, invading us. And the people in this neighborhood are going to feel invaded if you do this because you're allowing a big project using up all the ground space for everything except for the parking. And so, where are we all going to be when this runs amok and it has to since there's no place for anybody to stop, use, enter? Somebody just, Dave just mentioned the delivery trucks and the cleaning services and the guests. Some people might want guests on the Fourth of July. A lot of them are going to want guests on the Fourth of July. There's no place for these people to go. And it's, and it's, and it's so naive to think that somebody's really going to have a parking attendant out there telling people, you can't park in the street. Well, where can we park? Nowhere, you just can't park. Go find for yourself. Go park over on Main Street where they have public parking behind a lot of the buildings and everything. A problem is being created with no idea of a solution. Stewie didn't go ask the people, I heard the lady say that they were asked if they could, if they would rent him some space over at the Lewis Bay condos, the greenery. And they declined. Well, he knows he needs the parking spaces, we know he needs the parking spaces. We're closing our eyes to a huge problem that's going to hit us if we don't insist that he can handle the people, the parking this is going to generate. Not to mention the rest of us that told, you want a rubbish truck? Get it off the street when it empties the rubbish. His rubbish trucks are going to have to park in the street while they empty two trash barrels per unit. So, that truck's out in the street all that time. Then what are they going to do? They're going to have to come down the street and think they're going to turn around to get out. And they're not going to be able to turn around down there, it's unbelievable. Already, people come trying to use the steamship, they think they come to the steamship. Sometimes two-tractor trailers pull down there, one after the other, thinking they're getting on the ferry. Well, they can't get on it. So, they get a, they back up, they, oh, we move our stuff at the dockside and let them come in to turn them to let them out. We can't be doing this full-time and we certainly can't be doing this for pre, for something that's not even pre-existing. This is not a pre-existing problem. We're going to make it a problem and we're not going to have any solution for everybody that suffers other than maybe appealing this thing to, to the courts and trying to get them to see that this is, this is absurd. And then, the precedent it's going to set is ridiculous. There's, if, like I said, I agree that there should be more, you know, higher zoning on the harbor. But going to this height on top of that hill is the worst place to start. You can't find a worse place to start. It's the highest and it's higher by a landslide. Look at, look from the harbor how low the anchor in is and then look to left it how low the steamship is. And this is on a hill. So, that's, we're being blind. I do, I love the idea that, that somebody should just rent a balloon and float a balloon up that high because then you'll see what it's really going to be. And the balloon, by the way, ought to be at, you know, at the building down by water's edge. Not water's edge, but at the building's edge down by the water. Because then you'll see what people are going to see when they come in and they're looking up. It's going to be a towering situation. And the, the other problems it's going to create, I've mentioned them in the past, but I've not got into the traffic flow. The flow down that hill is an impossibility. You know, when the fire trucks come down, typically some, often times two come. But when they do a, when they, when the fire department does a, when they come down for training, sometimes you have one or two engines, then you have several cars and then you have, and it's all taken up. And I give them extra space to turn it into so they can get out of there. You've got to, you need to have a one-on-one with the fire chief and the guys that run those fire engines. I don't know how they're going to get back up that hill. I can't continue to do all this if you can let the next guy just make it so many times worse than it already is. I do it because I appreciate having those fire boats. I realize that they're primarily for the ferries and all that, but they can be a big advantage to me. God forbid there's ever, you know, there's ever a big fire. And the fire department, they can get a lot of stuff done. They'll find a way to maneuver through some of this maybe. But that's where the ambulance goes or it goes to my dock over at Hyannis Marina or it goes to the ramp. When the, when the fire department brings in somebody to, that's going to get to the hospital, this, they won't even be able to plan on this anymore. This is going to be something they know one vehicle can congest and murder like that. You know, presently, Chris, before we had a fire boat, I had to take my boat, one of my boats and send people to the end of the Hyannis Breakwater when someone's stuck out there. So, I love having those fire boats. I had to send my boat when somebody was half-drowning out there because we had nobody else to send. So, I'm thrilled that that's no longer a private responsibility doing this public thing. But when I did it, I learned all about it, I learned how essential those needs are. So, this is just not a small project that, and we're looking at it like, oh, we're going to get some public housing out of it. We should get public housing out of whatever he builds there, however the rules apply, they apply. He wants to build something too big, too high for the neighborhood, too much density for the neighborhood, too tall, too upfront, right on the, right on the water's edge just above for the neighborhood, given the height. And he wants us all to forget about all that and say, yeah, but we're building you some off-site affordable housing. It's just an unfair situation he's asking for us. And I think it's terrible that some people may be looking at it like, well, we need the tax money. We get tax money for everything. And lastly, who wouldn't buy a piece of property and like to get extra heights? And like to get extra lock coverage? And like to get others to bear the brunt of the parking? And they get others, who wouldn't like to have the rubbish truck empty out the main streets where the rest of us just bring it onto our own property and we got to know we've made, we've got solutions for that? Don't do anything here that you wouldn't do for everybody. You've got to give these guys, you've got to, you've got to take a much harder look at this. And what if, and what if I came in for ten stories and settled for five? Would you think I was being a bigger hero because I went down half? This is not a fair situation he's asking of you. No, I'll let you go and thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. I appreciate those comments and I will, you know, share that I do agree. And, you know, we did talk a lot about the concerns about the seasonal traffic, the parking. You know, I also wanted to state that the fire chief did come to the subcommittee, but if members wish, we can have the fire chief speak to this full board so we can consider that as well. So, no, thank you. A lot of information, definitely appreciate your insight. Sarah, what do you got next?
I believe that's it.
Okay, anybody else?
Thank you for giving us more than three minutes. You know what you ought to do, really? This is such a big thing to happen. It's going to be a deal changer for the town. This ought to be really a town hall and an open meeting where people in a room, they can all get a feeling for what's what. Most people watching this- Most people watching this have no idea of the height and how this is really gonna um gonna appear. And what was he used to being on committees? I was on committees for forty for before I started the the got on this windmill operation. I was on committees all my life. All to make Hyannis a better place. This is gonna send us backwards.
Thank you. No, appreciate it. Uh just one one final call. Any uh okay, Sarah, I missed anyone? Any anyone else here for public comment on this item? Okay, great. Any additional uh board comments? I think we're going to look to um continue this item. Um Ray?
I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, uh clearly we have a lot to think about. And um there there are some pretty strong feelings about this project as it's currently constituted.
Well said. Appreciate that. Uh Mary, did I see you?
Yes, could I make a motion to continue RA twenty twenty-two dash zero zero two? Dockside Residence, one fifty School Street and one fifteen School Street to the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting at seven P M.
Thank you, Mary. In a second. Thank you, Steve. All those in favor? Ray?
I.
And Tim?
I.
Bob?
I.
Michael?
I.
Mary?
I.
Steve? And myself, Steve Brochard votes aye. We'll pick this up at the November fourteenth meeting. Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny, Mr. Bornstein. Appreciate your time. We'll talk to you soon.
Thank you very much. Good night, everyone.
Night. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, right, of course. And um the next item on our agenda is a zoning amendment. And um Tim, could you go ahead and read this uh for us?
Uh sure. This is a proposed zoning amendment, uh Town Council, item number two thousand twenty-three dash zero two-three. Uh the proposal is to amend chapter two forty zoning, article three, chapter two thirty two forty dash thirty-nine. Shopping center redevelopment overlay district by repealing and replacing existing zoning ordinance to allow for mixed-use development, including multifamily dwellings, hotel and office uses uh uses with specified parking and dimensional requirements within the overlay district. Uh in addition, the proposed amendment incorporates affordable housing requirements for multifamily dwelling development, uh updates parking requirements for retail and regional shopping centers, updates landscape requirements and updates special permit provisions and procedures, among other proposed amendments. Uh this is continued from the September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two and the October third, two thousand twenty-two meeting. A majority of members present and voting for recommendation to Town Council. Uh this is a public hearing that has already been opened.
Excellent. Perfect. Thank you very much, Tim. And uh Ms. Cox, we'll turn it over to you, I believe, for a presentation.
Um okay, great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. Um for the record, Eliza Cox with the firm of Nuttner McLennan and Fish on behalf of uh the Cape Cod Mall property. Um joining me today is Tim Fox from the Simon Group, who was here at our last hearing, which was the first substantive hearing um on October third. Uh as the board will recall, we went through several PowerPoint uh slides, uh walking through some of the highlights of these proposed text amendments. And then the board uh took them out after providing some comment, took the matter under consideration to um to bring it here tonight. Um I know one of the matters that the board uh inquired about last night was uh the com last hearing was the comments um made from Attorney Kenny on behalf of his client who um has property uh that they recently acquired that abuts the mall. Um I did want to report to the board that since uh the last hearing on October third, um we've had several communications with the abutter regarding a potential interconnect. Um Attorney Kenny provided a draft uh agreement to us a week ago today. And my client provided comments on the draft back to Attorney Kenny uh earlier uh this afternoon. Um I don't intend to get into the details of uh those private negotiations. Um I think those are best left outside of the public forum, but I did want to report back to the board um that those conversations regarding a potential interconnect are ongoing. Um so I'm gonna leave it at that. If there are any particular questions that the board has, uh Tim and I are both here to try and answer those. Um otherwise, we are asking for your positive recommendation um of these proposed text amendments to the SCRADE overlay. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that. Uh just procedurally, I'm going to go to um Jim to see if he has any comments. Then we're going to go to uh board comments. Uh we're going to see if there's any members of the public that would like to speak. Uh before I go to Jim, I just want to uh commend you. That's great to hear. We're thrilled to hear that some dialogue is taking place. Um again, as you mentioned, out of the purview of this board, but we are, of course, thrilled to hear that that took place. Um Jim, is there anything you wanted to add before we go to board comment?
No, nothing further than this.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh we'd just like to go uh through the board, see if the board has any comments, questions, concerns, uh starting with Ray.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh Jim, I think this this question is directed to you. Uh I want to be clear on um the formula for the affordable housing and how how that will work and um and at what point do you actually put a dot at the end of the sentence and that is the the all the percentages are are frozen. So uh Jim, could you could you walk us through that, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I did have a discussion with uh with Mr. Sexton on on this matter, as I knew is a important subject of his uh that he brought up at last at the last meeting. So uh to to clarify, and Ms. Cox can certainly uh expand upon anything, uh but the the section in which it references affordable housing uh is a two-part uh section. And this was this really stems from the conversations that the applicant did have with with staff in um making sure that um the one affordability is is a key metric here in the in the overlay. Um two, kind of meeting the the moment in in which um uh producing affordable housing is is important and uh recent zoning changes has looked to increase what is on the books of ten percent affordable housing to thirteen percent affordable housing. Um and so the applicant has agreed to uh expand to that thirteen percent. Now, this section, the key part of this section is it's two-parter and that first part is it will meet the town's inclusionary affordable housing, which is again ten percent at this moment. Um and however, um if at the time of application, um it still remains at ten percent, the applicant through the SCRADE overlay district will actually provide that extra three percent. So it's a thirteen percent uh affordable housing. Uh you know, bigger picture, obviously, the town is undergoing housing production plan, needs assessment, and potentially that ten percent or thirteen percent, maybe it's not that magic number that will assist the town in meeting our goals of affordable housing. So if, let's say, a year from now, um the town has completed our housing analysis and determined that a higher percentage of inclusionary is necessary, uh any application be after that point would uh require whatever that percentage is. So let's again, let's just use uh real numbers and say that it's now fifteen percent uh in our inclusionary housing. An application would come in uh after that point and while it does say thirteen percent, that secondary action says that it would meet whatever is higher. Um and so it would meet that fifteen percent, as I as mentioned, just an example. Um and that and that would be triggered at time of application. And so if this applicant were to move forward right away, uh and that thirteen percent was higher, um then they would have to adhere to that. But say, ten years down the road, uh another application comes in and we would have to look at what what uh percentage is higher. Hopefully, it didn't make that more confusing for you, but happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jim. I think I think it's absolutely clear. Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ray. Anything else?
I just uh the the only other question that I I wanted to be clear on was something I brought up, which was uh the uh both the current and the proposed changes um cover um uh drive drive-throughs either existing or or proposed in a actually prohibits them. Is that correct?
You're referring, I I'm happy to answer that. I believe, yes, it's uh specific to, there is a I guess a subzone uh for a drive-through, which is where the Chick-fil-A is at the moment, uh but the rest are, yes, prohibited.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Ray. Great questions. And uh Tim?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Um I don't have any specific uh questions. I am glad to hear that some talks were ongoing with one of the abutters to potentially kind of unlock some potential uh in a budding area. And uh so I'm glad that we waited to allow something to happen, but um I'm still at the same point I was last week. I think this is a um a great update uh to the zoning map and the sorry, the SCRADE in this area. Uh and I think the Simon Group has been a good steward of the land and a good partner for the uh town to work with. And I think this is a great area to promote uh density and development to uh help our town achieve its needs uh for um housing and um also some flexibility for the mall to uh attain some different tenants and have some flexibility with how they are programming that space. Uh because at the last meeting, you know, I think it was uh very abundant from everyone who spoke that it seems to be very overparked. And uh I think um everything here seems good to me. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you, Tim. Well said. And Bob?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh I think I made uh significant comments um last time, so I won't repeat any of those. I think it was productive that we waited the um delayed this one meeting to allow the parties to uh chat. I think it's time to move forward. However, I think it's a great proposal. I recommend we adopt it and send it forward.
Great. Thank you, Bob. And Michael?
Uh thanks, Mr. Chairman. Uh I agree. I think this is a great proposal. I think we should move forward to it. I don't have anything else to add. This is overall um you know, a great project, so.
Great. Thank you. And Mary?
Um thanks, Steve. I agree. I think this is a good project. Um just I remember when the mall was built and I was a teenager and I was thrilled it was there, but times have changed and I think it's nice to see that that the Simons Group and others are interested in changing with it. Um it's a it's a huge piece of property that has a lot of value and could be certainly reused in a different way. And I'm I'm happy to see what it looks like or excited to see what it's going to look like in the next few years. So thank you.
Great. Well said. And Steve?
You, Steve? Yeah, I I've been in favor of of this from the start. I guess I just wanted to point out to Ray. Uh you know, ultimately, if if the best use that Simon deems is really a hotel and maybe housing isn't part of that component, um all the all the formulaic stuff from that part of the discussion um is probably less important. I still come back to I'm I'm very pleased to hear that there are discussions ongoing and I hope they turn out you know, to the benefit of the town. Uh that will allow kind of the housing that we had talked about and maybe that potential that sort of exists in the uh in those couple lots that uh represented by Minister Kenny at our last discussion. So um with without any any additional information and and uh with the expectation that people are gonna continue to operate with goodwill and with good intentions to you know, potentially allow us to see a development that sort of uh pleases both parties, if you will, in terms of, you know, the potential use that Simon will have as well as uh the opportunity maybe adds additional housing. I I think that is a favorable outcome.
Great. Well said. And uh for myself, I'll just kind of recap what I said last time. You know, I love um love mixed use and I think this is a great uh modification to the area. Um you know, again, um I really do hope that um some, you know, housing uh does come out of this. And um I would just be thrilled um to to see that happen. And um again, thrilled to hear of some dialogue um with Mr. Kenny, especially knowing that uh the site he represents uh it could lead to more housing because, again, it's all about housing. So um great to hear those developments and I certainly support this. Um would like to now go to um
Can I add one more piece, Steve?
Yes.
I I do hope um there's a lot of asphalt there. Um I do hope that there is some um consideration for kind of returning some of that back to a little bit more of a landscaped environment. Um as we all know, the parking isn't used as much as it ever really was. I don't think it was. I think it was overparked to begin with when it was first designed. But it would be really nice to see some more green space and maybe returning some of that back. Um or at least in the landscaping. And I'll leave it at that, Steve. Thanks.
Better to agree more. Well said. Definitely. Um go to well, actually, um Ms. Cox, is there anything you wanted to um respond to any of those comments before I go to public comment?
No, I I um I guess I would just say in response to the last comment from uh Ms. Barry, uh one of the changes that you may have noticed is incorporating additional landscaping requirements beyond what exists right now. So um new development or redevelopment under an amended bylaw would require additional landscaping beyond uh what the current bylaw requires.
That's great. Good to hear. Thank you.
Okay, great. And um I know Mr. Kenny's here for um public comment. Um so uh Mr. Kenny, I'm gonna go to uh to you first.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um I guess a little background is is needed here regarding the quote-unquote dialogue regarding the easement. Um at the last meeting, it it was I think a little bit of a feeling that we're a little bit of Johnny come lately to the party here and why we're trying to mess this up, et cetera. So I went back uh through my email history. The original plan for an easement dates to two thousand and nine. Uh my first uh contact that I could find was somebody from Simon was uh Bill Jackson in two thousand and eleven. Uh negotiations were on. We were told we would be given an easement. Uh the easement then became a license that was basically cancel cancelable at any time by Simon. So obviously, that does us no good. Uh and then later on, I ran into somebody that I know that worked for the Simons locally and the individual said to me, you're representing that guy that owns that property? And I said, yes. He goes, good luck. You're not getting anything. Uh they're not giving that guy anything because apparently the three owners ago uh tried to hold the Simon properties over the coals a little bit for uh purchase of the property. So there were some bad feelings there and I said, okay, I now I get have a better picture of what's going on. So I kind of let it sit, even though we've got an application in for a curb cut. Uh and then um the owner of Belize Motus, Jeb Belize bought the property. I reached out to Dana Grimes, who's an in-house attorney with with the Simon people. And I sent her an email and said that I represent the new owners. We wanted to uh restart the discussions regarding an easement. I received no response. I reached out again, no response. I finally reached out a third time and I got an email back saying that her client is studying the documents and they would get back to me. That was in two thousand and eighteen. Uh they were still studying the documents until I heard today from Mr. Fox with the draft easement. I sent an easement. We need an easement that is that is an easement. We we need it permanent. Now, they have land leases and I understand their concerns about land leases. But I can't understand how they're gonna develop their property if they don't have permanent access to Route twenty-eight. And we're looking to share that access. The response I got back this afternoon uh through Mr. Mr. Fox from Simon was taking the easement and basically they have a right to cancel it with one giving us one hundred and twenty days notice. So we're we're to waive any rights to any objections for anything that goes on on their property. And yet they have a right to cancel the easement within a hundred and twenty days. So once this zoning goes through, our quote-unquote easement would would quickly be canceled. and yet they have a right to cancel the easement within 120 days. So once this zoning goes through, our quote-unquote easement would, would quickly be canceled. Furthermore, it's my understanding that, that if this zoning goes through, they don't need the parking on what the, the back piece, uh, the larger parcel, the Darty parcel. Uh, they, they won't need that. It's currently under lease, uh, with Simon Properties for about six plus years. Uh, once that lease expires, uh, they have an option to purchase, but there's no purchase price stated. And they also have a right to continue the lease, but there are no terms stated. So essentially, uh, that property becomes free in six years or so. If you pass this zoning change going forward, you're, we're gonna end up with Fresh Halls Road reopened. And many of you may recall, a few years back, there was an individual hit by a car and killed there, uh, trying to walk across from Fresh Halls Road on the opposite side of the road to cut through my client's property. Uh, if, if we develop our property, there'll be increased traffic going in and out of there. As I stated at the last meeting, we don't have a right to use that infrastructure at Route 28. Then people are gonna do a U-turn at, at that light coming from Centerville. If they're going home to that property, they're gonna do a U-turn at that light and then bang it right into the property. It will be a mess. And it's not something that should be allowed to go forward. Now, we just concluded a prior hearing on a regulatory agreement. That regulatory agreement is essentially a proposal to change the zoning on a specific piece of property and the town is extracting significant community benefits. What community benefits are we getting here? This is a specific, I, I know it's not a regulatory agreement. It's a zoning change and it's a change of an area, but it's for the specific benefit of the mall property. What public benefits are we getting? What, what we're gonna get is a, a less safe traffic flow if you allow this to go forward. So my suggestion to you is, and since you're all in favor of this zoning, I'd suggest you send this back to staff, ask them to take a look at, at amending the map, adding my client's property to it and do the whole area. In the meantime, that'll give us an opportunity to work with the Simon people to get an actual easement, not something that they can cancel in 120 days. So I'd ask that you table this, send it back to staff, take a look at adding my client's property because we're looking to develop housing as well. Uh, and it makes sense when you look at the parcels. I don't understand why nobody came to my clients and, and asked about this. And I will say also representative of my client has been trying to get ahold of Mr. Fox for four to six months before we came, became aware of, of this whole zoning change. I, I happened to be sitting at a town council meeting and I saw this on the agenda and I pointed it out to my clients. Uh, during the time that my client was trying to get ahold of Mr. Fox, this, this was never raised. So I apologize that we're kind of asking you to mess up their timing, but I don't think that's our fault. Simon Properties closed the curb cut for both, uh, my, my, for my clients, three parcels over there. Closed the curb cut and essentially they're refusing to provide, to reopen, uh, grant us access to use the infrastructure at Route 28, uh, which to me is a public safety issue. So I ask that you table this, send it back to staff, add my client's properties, take a look at adding my, amending the map and adding my client's properties. We can, we can make the appropriate filings and that will give us time to get a, an agreement for an easement. So we'll, we have safe traffic flow and pedestrian flow in this area.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Appreciate the comments. Just wanted to note that, um, you know, an amendment to the map would have to be a separate item. Um, is that correct, Jim?
Yes, yeah. What's before you tonight is, uh, an amendment to the text of, of the zoning. Um, you know, certainly the, uh, a petition can be made for a separate request, but before you tonight is the amendment to the text of the overlay district.
Right. I appreciate that. And, uh, Mr. Kenny, I mean, I am, uh, you know, I do, I do hear your situation and, um, I understand your frustration. Um, personally, um, I do still want to, um, you know, have a, have a motion on this item and, uh, don't necessarily, um, support, um, uh, pushing it to, uh, another meeting. Um, Sarah, do we have any other additional, uh, public comment, um, on this item?
Uh, I don't believe so unless Ms. Carnan wanted to speak to this. She's the only person from the public still left.
Got it. Laura, we see you still on. Do you have any comments to make on this item? Okay. Doesn't look like it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may respond to your comments and, um, y- yes, it would delay it and we'd have to amend the map. But, uh, once again, what's the public benefit here? The benefit's all to Simon Properties. This enhances the value of their property by millions of dollars. And what you were gonna end up with, and I'll tell you now, it's gonna be Fresh Halls Road reopened. If that's what you want, then feel free to go forward tonight. If you don't want that, we have no leverage if you proceed with this and push this through. It's been since 2009 since we've been talking about this. So to be happy that we had dialogue. I reached out and started the dialogue. I sent the draft and I got a, what came back today was where we were in 2011, which is, it's not an easement. It's a license that they can cancel.
No, I, listen, I, I completely, again, I completely hear where you're coming from. Mr. Kenny, I have utmost respect for you, um, and everything that you're doing. To be perfectly frank, those deliberations are separate from what is before us. And I wanna stay focused on what's before us. Um, and again, I'm not trying to diminish the situation you're in. I do feel for your frustrations, but, um, I do wanna have this board focus on, um, what's before us.
And I would ask that you voted down because it's poor planning. Your primary charge is to, for the safe, safe roads is the planning board's primary charge.
I understand. And Ms. Cox, before you respond, I do wanna, you know, you did have one comment about what public benefit there is. Um, there could be, uh, the, the formation of housing and, um, that is a public benefit. So, um, Mr. Kenny, we're gonna continue along. Again, I appreciate everything. I have most respect for you, but we're gonna continue along. Um, Ms. Cox, do you have any final comments before we look for a motion?
Yeah, I, I, just a couple. So, um, I just wanted to respond to the comments from Attorney Kenny about traffic impacts and traffic flow. I think that's a trap that often happens when you're considering zoning changes. You start looking at potential impacts associated with development. This isn't the time to that, to do that. When a particular project is proposed, there is going to be plenty of regulatory review to understand potential impacts associated with a particular development. Right now, you're creating a foundation to allow for applications to come forward and at that time the impacts are evaluated. In all likelihood, any development here on the mall property will require Cape Cod Commission review, which as you know, is a thorough review, including transportation impact analyses and also going to the zoning board for a special permit to modify, uh, existing zoning decisions affecting the property. So this is really just the beginning of a potential process as developments come forward. Um, there will be plenty of opportunity for a public comment and, uh, understanding any impacts that may be associated with the development.
Steve, if I, can I just make a couple of comments?
Yes, Steve, go ahead.
I mean, I, I understand we're being asked to look at a zoning amendment specifically for this parcel. I guess I'll, I'll just ask Jim, um, Mr. Kenny is asking for his client's parcels to be included in, in, in this map and I realize that may be done under a separate, uh, request or, or item on our agenda. Can you just tell me what the impact would be if, let's just assume those, those parcels are not added to the map for whatever reason? Let's say some information comes up that we cause this board to say, you know, it doesn't make sense to add those parcels to the map. Is, is there any detriment or is there a downside? Cause I, I still, I'm just kind of hung up on the fact that, you know, when we looked at the map and we looked at kind of the, kind of the aerial view, it just, it just seemed to make total sense that those would have been included. And, and I, 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 I thought it would have made sense to have a request for those to be included maybe previously. I understand that the, the timing of this is a little, is a little quick, it seems to me. I'm just wondering why, you know, if, if those aren't added, is there, is there any downside to those parcels being able to be used for what they're currently allowed to be used for? And I do agree from a, just from a holistic standpoint, if, if we're kind of limiting our opportunity to maybe take advantage of a site that's potentially used for housing, it's, it's very likely that we go ahead and approve this zoning amendment, which, which I still think is the right thing to do. But what if we approve this and whether those parcels are added to the map or not, I think is probably immaterial. But essentially, if they're allowed to be used for housing and now all of a sudden, Mr. Kenny and his clients have to say, okay, here's what we're gonna allow. We're, we're allowed to build housing here and here's what we're requesting. We're requesting a curb cut on 28. So my only concern and thought is, how does that make it a better use of that property? And, and how do we, how do we sink, you know, allowing a curb cut on probably one of the, one of the busiest stretches of land or roadway in the town of Barstow, uh, to be used as an access point for housing development? And then, I guess with that, with that being said, I recognize this has to go to the town council. Ultimately, they're gonna approve any, um, any zoning change and anything to this degree. So my only thought is, I don't, I don't know why, you know, based on the representation Mr. Kenny just made in terms of, um, you know, a, a 120-day termination of a, of a, of an easement. Um, I understand they want to keep flexibility. I assume maybe, maybe, you know, Simon's plan will change. I just don't think that long-term, that seems like a, you know, a, a good option for us to sort of walk down and, and all of a sudden miss out on potential, you know, housing in probably an area that is best suited for it in terms of its location and, and size. So it's a lot, threw a lot at you, but maybe you can answer the first part of that question.
Not a problem. I, I think I understand the question and in terms of impacts to, uh, Mr. Kenny's site, um, for being in overlay district or not being in the overlay district, um, you know, it, it may potentially come down to truly what is developable on that site. Um, I mean, it most, much of the one lot is a paved parking lot. Um, but really what my understanding is, is coming down to the, the uses and the density, uh, wishing to receive on this site. And whether or not it's in the overlay, uh, district would, um, if it's in the overlay district, it may limit the developability of the site, uh, due to the fact that, as you've seen in, in what's proposed, there's significant, uh, requirements for impervious surface across the overlay district, um, in terms of parking spaces across the overlay district. So they're all working, uh, together as one. And, you know, when it was designed, I think it was really meant for, um, you know, one, uh, complex or one, um, ownership value. That's not to say that it couldn't, uh, work with adding additional parcels and additional ownership, but I don't think that's the only way, uh, to, we can achieve, uh, potential development on, uh, the site that Mr. Kenny represents. Um, and in terms of the curb cut on 28, I think it would come down to, as Ms. Cox referenced, you know, once we get to actual site plan review, um, you know, looking at, uh, a curb cut on 28, as Mr. Kenny mentioned, it could be, uh, very detrimental to the, to the community. And we would have to look at the traffic impacts at that time in terms of what that use is and how that impacts, uh, would, um, what impacts would be created to the curb cut on 28. Obviously, I think, um, you know, the town, as it always does with any kind of site plan, if there is opportunities to work with their neighbors, um, that is always the recommendation, uh, to make those, that connectivity, um, as was referenced by both parties, you know, there's nothing that can, uh, we can mandate between those two entities. Um, but, uh, you know, it certainly would be a recommendation of the, of the, of the staff and of, you know, our safety officers, uh, or what have you. But I think what it boils down to, I think it may be a little bit premature for me to be able to s, tell you what the developability of the lot is with, within the overlay and outside of the overlay. Uh, but again, I think, you know, staff is certainly willing to work with the property owner, uh, who's a great representative of the community. Uh, and we can work with the property owner to try and assist in, you know, achieving, uh, what their ultimate goals are there.
So what I, what I just heard you say was basically, you have to have, you know, you, you would need essentially approval to make an additional curb cut, which quite frankly may not, may not be appropriate. So my thought is, I, I, I mean, I understand from, from Simon's standpoint, they want to move this forward. Clearly it's coming up now for a specific reason. There, there is a plan. Um, and I'm certain that, you know, large corporations, successful as they are, don't do things just because they feel like doing it. This, this has been in existence for many, many years and all of a sudden, you know, a change is being requested. So I am 100% in favor of doing this and my only, my only comments would be, I'm not in favor of doing it tonight only because I don't, I don't get the sense that, um, you know, this leaves us many options. As it gets to the town council, maybe this issue comes back up and maybe there's a discussion around, um, what the agreement looks like at that point. But from my personal opinion, um, I don't see the urgency. So, um, with that, I, I will vote no just tonight. Uh, and in the future, I'd most likely vote yes.
Okay. Appreciate that, Steve. I'm gonna swing, I'm gonna swing back around to the board members, kind of gauge where we're at. Ray, take it away.
Uh, so, uh, I guess the flip side of Steve's, um, I think very insightful question, um, uh, is, so what is the downside of delaying, um, um, our, a positive vote tonight? Um, and as pointed out, we, we, there are, what the process goes, that it will be a separate, um, issue, uh, item to amend the map if that in fact does occur. Uh, and if, if we do that, uh, so do we, uh, then that mean that we are gonna hold off until such time that we work through a, a met amendment, um, in, in order to, uh, I guess maximize the, 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 the public good from, from incorporating, uh, both parcels and, and how long would that take? So, um, uh, again, I guess I would, I would throw that to you, Mr. Chairman, and to, and to Jim, um, as far as how long it would take and, um, is it worthwhile to wait?
Yeah, I mean, that's my only concern is, you know, are we, are we waiting, hoping that an agreement is made? And if it's not, you know, where, where does it end? I guess that's, that's my only concern. So, um.
The, the planning board is not in the business, yeah, I just, I, I agree with you. The planning board is not in the business of, of, uh, mediating uh, between negotiating, you know, private negotiators. So, uh, I don't wanna get wrapped up in that.
Agreed. I mean, again, I'm, I'm, would be thrilled to hear of an agreement. I just, um, I don't know, um, how much delay there could potentially be. Um, Tim? Some comments, some ideas where you're at?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I kind of share, uh, well, I share sentiments with both Ray and Steve. Obviously, we wanna promote, um, more development and, you know, unlock some potential in these lots, especially with some mixed-use multifamily. Um, but just with the functions of this board and, you know, what's in front of us, you know, we're really good at, uh, regulating the construction of sandboxes and making plans and blueprints for sandboxes, but we can't regulate that people play nice in the sandbox, you know? And I think it's, we have a great proposal in front of us that will, uh, give a great, um, member and a great developer in our community, uh, the options and availability in the future to promote development of the types that we'd like to see in a great area in town that's ripe for it. And, uh, you know, if there was an easy answer to help the Butters in part of this process, I'd be all for it. But I just, you know, I think there's plenty of options available to them, uh, in the future to bring up a town council or come back to this board at a later date to take their property and put it into the zoning district or, you know, if they wanna develop it, they can go do a multifamily 40B and go through the zoning route. There's plenty of options available to them and I just, I don't see how it affects us right now. So, um, that's just where I'm at on it.
Got it, thank you, Tim. And Bob, some, some thoughts?
With some hesitation, Mr. Chair. I'm just sitting here thinking that, just speaking hypothetically. If at some point in the future there was an amendment to the map. Which included the land we're talking about next to the TD Bank. Would we still not be in the exact same situation we are with regard to access to the parking lot?
Yes, that's, that's correct. That's a great point.
Thank you.
Michael? Just unmute first.
I agree, Bob, I was going to ask the same thing, so again, you know, I'm in favor. I have something in front of me that I had a chance to look into it. I think it's a great project. It's unfortunate that both bodies, you know, cannot come to an agreement, but, you know, I am ready. To move forward. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Michael. Mary?
I'm in a similar situation to Michael, I believe that we should move forward. I don't, I understand the situation that Attorney Kenny has outlined and I. I understand that it's not ideal, but Bob made a good point is, is that even if we. Went through the hypothetical situation that, or position that he had outlined, we'd still be in the same exact position, so. My interest is, is moving forward.
Okay. All right, well, let's start by, well, first of me just ask. Sarah, I don't see anybody else additional for public comment. Tim, Tim, you have no comment at this time, right?
This Tim, right?
My bad, Tim Fox, I'm sorry.
No, nothing to add, I would just like to say that, you know. You know, Mr. Kenny, the first correspondence that we had, you know, was kind of through our attorney, was a week ago and. You know, we provided our comment to his original draft and we're happy to keep those lines of communication open as we work together.
Great, okay, and I don't see anybody else on, so let's start by, I'd like to seek a motion to close the public hearing.
Sure.
Thank you, Bob, in a second. Okay, heard Tim, thank you, Tim, all those in favor, Ray?
Aye.
And Tim?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
And Michael?
Aye.
And Mary?
Aye.
And Steve?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud votes aye. Public meeting is closed. And at this time, I would seek a motion on this item.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Tim.
I would make a motion to recommend zoning amendment TC item number two thousand twenty-three dash zero two three, zero two three, as presented to town council.
Thank you, Tim, in a second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Ray, and all those in favor, Ray?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Steve?
Oh.
And myself, Steve Robichaud votes aye. Matter passes, okay.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you all, good night.
Thank you. Next up, we have an update on the LCP, Kate, do you have anything for us?
Yes, thank you, Chair, Kate Maldonado, Assistant Director of Planning and Development. I'd like to provide a quick update with regard to the town's local comprehensive plan. At this time, we are still actively in engagement, seeking insight with regard to existing conditions. As well as visioning for the future of the town of Barnstable over the next ten or so years. To date, we've achieved several meetings and gone out in the field, I'll list off those quickly. We've gone to the Ktuut Civic Association, the Community Safety Day, Barnstable Village Association, Open Streets. And this past weekend, Jim discussed the local comprehensive plan with. Parents of local youth soccer members, which is fantastic, both staff is out in the field. Actively engaging our public to seek this insight. And the insight is with regard to at the civic association meetings, we've talked about. Strengths and weaknesses, opportunities and challenges that our community faces. When we're out in the public, we're talking about areas that our community cherish, as well as. What we can do to improve and enhance our community for the future. Special thank you to Bob Quist, who has attended several of the events and helped us tackle the tablets at Open Streets, that was fantastic. To stay up to date and to learn more about the local comprehensive plan, we would suggest and recommend that the board, as well as members of the community, visits barnstablelcp.com. Lastly, our next local comprehensive planning meeting will occur this Thursday, October twenty seventh. And that will be held via Zoom, so it'll be held remotely via Zoom. And the objective of that meeting is to provide a presentation to start a dialogue about. The status of the goals and strategies that were defined in the two thousand and ten local comprehensive plan, so we'll see where we're at today. And we will also talk about, again, achievement or engagement, I apologize, that's been achieved to date. And what our next steps for engagement will be. You know, we've gone to a few civic associations and we've got meetings to attend several, the remaining civic associations in the upcoming weeks. And lastly, I would like to promote our soon to be released survey. Which will be live next Monday, which is unfortunately Halloween, so to kick off. To kick off the survey, participation staff will be on Main Street in downtown Hyannis. Handing out candy and some flyers for the survey to try to engage our residents and get some feedback for that survey. And certainly, we'd appreciate your help as well to spread the word once that survey is live. So a lot happening, we're out in the field, engagement, certainly if anyone thinks of any events, please pass them our way. We're trying to get as much feedback as we can related to existing conditions and visioning. And we look forward to kicking off that survey and handing out some candy soon, thank you.
So the big question, Kate, of course, is will you be in costume?
I was actually going to make a joke about that, that I should probably find something that's.
Yes, you should, yeah.
Absolutely.
You could.
Engagement will go up.
The planning board would recommend, could make some recommendations.
Only if a majority can agree on the costume. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
That's great.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think Kate neglected to mention that Jim sacrificed himself for the cause by touting the LCP during an event at the Brazilian Grill.
Yeah, we did, Saturday afternoon.
They, they held him down and forced roscuria down his throat until he cried uncle.
Always a good time, any places you guys have throughout that you wanted Kate and I to bring the road show, don't hesitate to reach out.
I love it, you guys are doing great work and very much appreciate that update, Kate, thank you so much. Moving along, we have some correspondence, Chapter ninety-one notice for forty-nine Main Street, Centerville, a pure extension. And we've got a couple sets of minutes to approve if we could. These were on the agenda and we have approval of minutes for September twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, we have a motion to approve those draft minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the draft minutes from September twenty-six, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Mary, in a second.
Michael, I'll second.
Great, thank you, Michael, and all those in favor, Ray?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud votes aye. And also seeking motion to approve the October third, twenty twenty-two draft minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, draft minutes from October third, twenty twenty-two.
Excellent, and a second?
Michael, I'll second.
Thank you, Michael, all those in favor, Ray?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud votes aye. Future meetings, November fourteenth and November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two at seven P M. And before we adjourn, do we have any additional board or staff comments?
I have just a question with regards to the, to the zoning amendment. When will that go in front of town council? Do we know?
Oh, that won't be formalized until it's brought to leadership and they'll schedule it for an agenda. The earliest it could go at this point would likely be the December meeting, I believe, yeah.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Yeah, good question, okay, anything, anything else before we part ways?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Great, thank you, Mary, in a second?
Michael, I'll second.
All right, Michael, thank you, and all those in favor, Ray?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud votes aye, meeting is adjourned.